I think it says five. Yes, it is. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to call the, sorry, November 10th Board Meeting to order. Before we have approval of the agenda, we want to have a brief moment of silence. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman North and to Vice Chairwoman Brown and our board members. Tonight, I would like to begin with a moment of silence for two of our RCPS family members we have lost recently. Specifically, we remember Abraham McGill, who served as a paraprofessional at Sims Elementary School since 2019, and Prince Richards, who served as a school bus driver since 2021. We send our sincere condolences to their family and friends and ask that you keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Now we'll observe a brief moment of silence. Thank you.
Moving on, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Heather.
And I have a motion and second. All in favor, raise your hands, please. Motion carries unanimously. Do we have any visitors for comments? We don't have any visitors today. We'll move on to the superintendent's cabinet's updates with first the Office of Teaching and Learning. Beth Gillis.
Good evening, Dr. Oates, Madam Chair North, Vice Chairwoman Brown, and distinguished board members. Thank you so much for having me tonight along with Stacy Gillespie, the gifted lead teacher. My name's Beth Gillis and I'm the coordinator for Advanced Academics. We're going to be talking about five different areas that fall under Advanced Academics tonight. We're going to talk about the Governor's Office of Student Achievement, most consortedly our GHP, Governor's Honors Program, the College and Career Culture here in RCPS, our gifted K-12 education model, Advanced Placement, and Avid. We'll start with AP tonight. I am so excited to get to be here to tell you all the wonderful things that are going on in our district with our students in Advanced Academics. We offer Advanced Placement classes in all of our secondary schools from Heritage, Rockdale, Salem, Magnet, RCA, and RVC. And these classes allow our students to earn college credit depending on their scores when they're in secondary ninth through 12th grade. Not just anyone can teach these classes. Our teachers do have to be trained over the summer by College Board and the AP Summer Institutes, and they also have to have their syllabus approved by College Board and go through an audit process. Many of the different courses that we offer fall into multiple choice categories for formats and free response questions. Within that, we have a model where grades are given to students anywhere from a one to a five. Typically, a student will get college credit in a three, four, or five, but we do have a website that we ask our students to go to that's provided by College Board, where they can look at the college of their interest, put in their score, and look to see if that college accepts a three, a four, or a five. I'm very proud to say here in RCPS, we're not gatekeepers to who can be in Advanced Placement classes. Anyone in ninth, 10th, 11th, or 12th grade is eligible to be in AP. So let's look at some of the courses we offer. We offer a plethora of courses. We offer courses in math, social studies, STEM, science, and English. I'm excited to say that we are right now in the phases of looking at offering AP Precalculus, which is a brand-new course this year with College Board, and AP African-American Studies. To do this, I had to write a grant to College Board and ask for our RCPS to pilot these programs. We're still waiting to hear back. I called right before this meeting to our representative. He said I should know shortly, but he feels like at least one of our schools should be able to offer that. So I'm excited to think that we'll be able to pilot those new programs here next year. When I think about Advanced Placement here in RCPS, I talked to y'all in September about how when we're talking about graduation, it's not if, but when for our students. And in Advanced Academics, it's the same, and it also, to me, is my job to help promote a culture that offers our students equity, experience, and exposure. And one thing I'm excited about is that every school in RCPS has increased their numbers in students and enrollment in Advanced Placement. This chart, I know, I am excited because it is very much a collaborative and concerted effort with myself, the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Freeman, and the principals and the AP coordinators at the school to encourage students and promote Advanced Placement. So we saw an increase in each of those areas this year. Notice that the enrollment is a larger number than students. That's because one student could be in more than one AP class. This is a look at some of our district data this past year. I'm also excited to say that we had a 6% increase in our students who scored a three, four, or five on their AP test this past year. We also increased our AP scholars from 66 to 83. In addition to that, RCPS had seven AP courses where our students here in Rockdale County's, their mean score and their percentage of scores of three or higher outperformed the state and the global averages. This is very exciting. Two of those courses is AP Seminar and AP Research, which I'm looking forward to expanding those. I'm going to talk to some principals right now to expand those to some of our traditional schools. It's currently being offered at Magnet, but to promote that equity in other places, also to promote the AP Capstone diploma we'd like to see in 12th grade as well. We've also been able to offer professional learning for our teachers throughout the year. To teach an Advanced Placement course is very rigorous and is a time involving for them to develop these unit plans in their curriculum maps. We use the College Board course and exam descriptions. This past year, we were able to offer introductory sessions again for new AP teachers, and we also offered ongoing professional development during our Independent Learning Days in September and October. A couple of things coming up in Advanced Placement. We offered an AP and a dual enrollment night for parents in October. We offered that at RCA. We had a great turnout for that. We're offering another one virtually for parents next week for those parents who might not be able to make it in the evenings. The first week of December, we'll be having our PSAT scores come back, so we'll be mailing out once again our AP potential letters to all current eighth, ninth, 10th, and 11th graders about their PSAT results and what they could potentially be taking next year for AP. In addition, we were awarded nine AP grants last year, and I'm in the process of writing those grants for this coming year as well. For teachers, they are able to use AP Progress Monitoring. It's offered by College Board. This is a way they can drill down for their students the habits and the skills of mind that their students need to be able to do in order to make that three, four, or five on the exam. So a lot of great things going on in AP and a lot of increases that we saw and a lot of academic achievement gains. So very excited about that. I was just here in September talking with you about the College and Career Culture. Just wanted to put this slide in here to let you know the penance are in schools. They are so excited about them. When I go and deliver them, the counselors are excited, the kids are excited, and they just want to say thank you to you that they're able to see this in their buildings and they're able to see it not just in high school, but our middle schools have them and our elementary schools have them. So thank you very much again for that. GHP, some more exciting things happening here. We have our Governor's Honors Program. As you know, that is something that is offered by the Governor's Office of Student Achievement, and it's from mid-June to mid-July. Here in RCPS this year, we have been busy. Actually, tomorrow, I wrap up interviews at Rockdale County inherited for our theater, but we started on November 2nd, and we've been rolling during the day and in the evenings interviewing our students. And why has it taken so many days? Because I'm proud to say that this year in RCPS, we had 111 students nominated for our Governor's Honors Program. That, again, is a collaborative effort between Dr. Freeman and our high school principals and our Governor's Honors Program coordinators at the schools. It's very exciting. The kids are excited. Here's just a couple of the fine arts work that they have submitted. I know tomorrow we'll be blown away again when we go to interview the students and judge them in theater. The list is due to the state on November 15th of who our district finalists are to go to the next round. But very excited about our students. We know that we have wonderful students here in RCPS, and it's exciting to see everyone else recognize that as well with 111 nominations. We're going to move into our gifted programs now. I'm going to let Ms. Gillespie take this and explain to you what's going on with K-12 gifted.
Good evening, everyone. This is the definition for gifted education from the state, and it's also the definition that we use here in Rockdale County to identify who our gifted students are. Give you a moment to read that. In gifted education, we use a lot of assessments to identify our gifted students, some of those being the ITBS and COGAT. Those are the main ones we use for achievement and mental ability. At the upper levels, we use the pre-ACT. We also, we continue to use COGAT in Iowa Middle School. We use the PSAT and the PSAT and the MNSQT. And they're given at different times of the year. We have two testing periods. We have a fall testing period, which we're currently in right now, and we have a spring testing period as well to find those students who are eligible for gifted services. When it comes to the gifted education process, phase one is just screening and trying to find those students. We have automatic referrals that come from testing that the district pushes out for elementary and middle school. And then we have reported referrals where people can make referrals based on a child's talents or skills, and they can be referred by anyone, a parent, an aunt. They can refer themselves, which we did have a couple last year. A couple of fifth graders actually said, "I'm going to be in gifted, and I think I'm eligible." So they did get put on the referral list as well. Phase two, we have gifted support team meetings, which we call GST, in which we take all those students that have been referred either by the reported referral or the automatic referral, and we have meetings with their teachers and based on the information we have, the data that we have on those students, whether they should move forward with testing or wait a little longer. And that's where our testing list comes from. And then in phase three, we start testing. We send home the parents a consent to evaluate. We start testing those students to see if they can pass three out of the four qualifying areas. Then phase four, we come back together and we say hi. You know, these are the students that passed three out of four of those tests or either all four, and we began, we asked the parents for permission to serve them in the county in gifted services, and then we begin their services in phase five. In elementary, currently, we have 11 gifted specialists. There's one at each elementary school. We meet monthly. I have developed a gifted observation tool to go into those classrooms to make sure that our instruction is academically challenging and being delivered at a high level. We have specialized professional learning for those gifted teachers, whether it be in differentiation or coaching, because they too are coaching the other students, I'm sorry, the other teachers in their school that serve those gifted students as well. And we use project-based learning as our curriculum to make sure we're enriching the curriculum that they're learning in their classrooms. Our service models are as follows. For K-2, we typically use collaboration, where the gifted specialist collaborates with those teachers who are not gifted certified at the school but are serving our gifted students. And 3-5, those students actually come, they get pulled out one day a week and get their services from the gifted specialist. Again, the curriculum is project-based learning, and those units have been written by the teachers, but they had to go through a rigorous approval process to make sure that those units are suitable for our gifted students. In January, we start pulling second grade to get them ready for the resource model the next year. So we are in fall testing right now, and that will go on through December for elementary. So far, we have about 378 referrals for this fall, which is really good because this is usually our lower, this is usually our lower semester for testing because the teachers are still getting to know the students. We normally have a higher number in spring, so we're really happy to see we have almost 400 students being tested this fall. Our gifted teachers also participate in the acceleration process. So when students are brought up for acceleration, our gifted specialists are the ones that conduct their testing for them. And again, I mentioned the observation tool we're using to ensure academically challenging environments in our gifted classrooms. Secondary, there's a universal screener that has been conducted, and those scores are going to come back in December, and their GST meetings are ongoing for their students. So far in the district, we have 1,620 gifted students, and that is 10.3% of our total population, which is over what the state recommends at 10%. And there are the numbers for the different levels. That, those numbers are ever-changing because, again, we're in testing period right now, so they're going to go up even more, and then they'll go up again in spring. In an effort to have more gifted certified teachers on staff, we currently have three teacher cohorts, gifted teacher cohorts, and there are 36 teachers, and those cohorts are actively going. I think we're in course two out of the four courses they have to take to get gifted certified. We also have monthly meetings with the state, Ms. Mary Jean Banter, and Beth is a member of the Georgia Association for Gifted Children as well. Now it's time for Avid.
I also want to thank y'all as well. Part of that gifted cohort she talked about endorsement is a thank you to you all because you graciously said, "Yes, we can offer this, and we can have it during the daytime, and we'll help find subs and pay for that so our students can have the type of education and academically challenging environment that they deserve and that they need." So thank you for that as well. Moving on to our last topic tonight, Avid. Excited for the things going on in Avid, and as I mentioned before to you, Avid has become a grassroots effort here in this district with our schools, and I am so excited about it. Avid deals with four domains. It deals with instruction, systems, leadership, and culture. And if you buy into Avid, which our schools have done, then you see it really as a continuous school improvement model right there that they can use daily. It's a living, breathing document, which is their CCI, and that instrument helps us when we meet to determine what strengths do we have in this building and what areas for growth do we need. Avid, when we look at the CCI, looks at four domains. It looks at the instruction, the systems, which is your progress monitoring and your equity, the leadership in the building, and also the culture. What's the common belief in student success? Are the expectations high for all? What are we telling our students they can do and what that they can succeed in? At the elementary level, we have two schools currently. They are actively using the Avid binder and focus note-taking. We have two middle schools, currently two high schools, and looking to bring on Heritage next year. They're in their training phase currently. The one thing that Avid has done wonderfully well this year with the help of the Avid leads at each school is offering professional development in the district. We offered an Avid District Path in June here, and then we've also offered professional development in July, September, and October. We're going to offer another Avid path here in the next couple of weeks. These are just some pictures of our Avid leads offering this professional development within our district. And I wanted to put this in here. This is some feedback that we got from our teachers about our Avid leads. You'll see they say things like, "Should have been an all-day training," or "This should be a required session for all." "Strategies and engagement was awesome." We'll use these strategies for WICER within the classrooms. And this is what we want to hear. Feedback that teachers right now are going to use these strategies, take these back into their classroom, and implement them in the coming weeks. So we're excited about this. The other thing I'm excited about is that this shows we're building capacity within our district. We have the best and the brightest right here, and we're using our teachers to lead that professional development for others. We talk about cycle for results, especially in teaching and learning a lot. We talk about our improvement model. But to me, one of the ultimate cycle for results is when you have a student who came out of Rockdale County Public Schools and now is giving back to the district and being a productive member of our society. Have a little bit for you.
Hey, my name is Alonso Allen. I'm a current teacher at Rockdale County High School. I graduated from Rockdale County High School in 2014, and I was in the Avid program. Avid program helped me with organization, note-taking. After I started taking, getting into Avid in middle school and high school, my testing got better. My doing my homework got better because I was more organized, and I carried that over to my college. In college, it helped me stay organized and on track. I remember those strategies I used in high school. So when I got frustrated and didn't remember what to do, I kind of looked back and remember to, you know, stay organized and make sure I was taking the proper notes and using Cornell style. And then I do kind of use, I still do use those strategies now for organization, just for everything I do. And then I try to implement that in my classroom here at Rockdale County High School.
So I thank Alonso for doing that for us, and we also have a current teacher at Conyers Middle School who is a graduate of RCPS School System and went through the Avid program. So excited to see them coming back. Just a couple of next steps that I have. We didn't list everything, but we do have AP order deadline coming up for exams. We'll continue to progress the monitor within our AP classes. I want you to take note of the bullet, the pre-AP exploratory committee. So one of the things that I'm looking at is increasing the rigor across the board. We talked about equity. It needs to be for everyone. We have a meeting coming up in November with a collaborative effort of myself, Dr. Freeman, Ms. Hunter, Assistant Superintendents. I have two middle school principals, two high school principals coming. Ms. Chester's going to be there, and we're looking at pre-AP for our district. We're just exploring this at the moment, but looking at what can we offer for some middle grades and our ninth and 10th grade population to increase the rigor for them as well and make sure that we're meeting their needs. We will also be in gifted. We are, as Ms. Gillespie said, it is ever-changing with those numbers there, but the good thing is it's always increasing with those numbers there as we continue to test our students and make sure that they are gifted eligible. And if you notice this year, we, it's a slight increase of 0.3%, but we have now gone above the state average. And I'm sure when we continue to test our people, we will see a few more percentage increases there. Excellence recognition. Like I said, we have 111 Governor's Honors nominations. I've talked to some people in the district. They can't remember the last time we had that many students. I'm so excited. I feel like I have the privilege and the honor of being able to be in their interviews and watching them do their performances, and it really is amazing what they're doing. With Avid, we're continuing the CCI process. We'll be having our implementation meetings with Heritage, and then we're looking at taking some teams this year to Florida to go to Avid Summer Institute. Overall, Ms. Gillespie and I want to thank you for us being here. Like I said, I feel like we have the honor and privilege of having one of the best departments here in RCPS. But we understand that our major next step is to continue to promote a culture that affords our students opportunities by ensuring equity, exposure, and experience because we know our students are being locally developed to be globally positioned. Thank you all. Do you have any questions?
I have a quick question. For the gifted program, I know you said it was project-based learning. So is that different from back when we used to have program challenge and the kids from the elementary school would go to another setting? Are these kids staying in their home schools?
Yes, ma'am. They stay at their home schools now. We no longer have the Program Challenge Center, but the instruction remains the same.
So are they pulled out in a classroom of all gifted? Or do they each individually have just some special projects, but they're still with the general classroom?
In grades three through five, they're pulled out for a full day with the gifted specialists altogether, just that.
Okay.
So grades three through five.
Thank you.
I do have one question, please. It talks about, sorry, gifted standards set by the state, correct? The gifted standards are set by the state?
Program standards.
Standards are set by the state. So I'm going to pick a class, entomology, right? A teacher decides she's been certified to be a gifted teacher. Is there a repository where they're pulling classes from, or do they just come up with creative ideas for what they want to teach their gifted students?
For high school or for?
Elementary, middle, or high school.
At the, let's talk about secondary first, and then I'll let her speak. At the secondary level, high school level, students are receiving their delivery model for instruction through our AP classes or our Excel classes. A teacher would know that they have a gifted student in their classroom, and that's where we would encourage them to use differentiation for that, but that's not their service model unless it was an advanced content course. At the middle school level, we offer it through our Carnegie credits. We also offer, they have gifted research and stuff there. That's one of the areas where I'm looking at having pre-AP come because I want to ensure that we are making sure our students are getting what they need in middle school to prepare them for high school and that they've been able to have that. So I know that's one of the areas I'm working on for middle school.
For elementary, their project-based learning units are based on their current standards. We don't reteach them, but after they've learned them, we enrich and accelerate, which is a program standard set by the state to enrich and accelerate what the students have learned. So the project-based learning units have been written by the teachers, but with help. They were trained first, and then they have a lot of resources they pull from to develop those units, and those units have to be approved before they can actually deliver that instruction.
And who does the approval?
I do.
And one more question. On your PSATs at the middle school level, I saw that the students are taking PSAT at the middle school level. Is it the same thing that we traditionally had the students take when they were in, what, 10th grade?
Yes, okay. It is similar. So what we have here in RCPS is we, and this is another thank you, y'all offer and generously have our students in eighth, ninth, and 11th grade take the PSAT suite. So now let me break that down. There is a PSAT 8-9 and a PSAT NMSQT. Our eighth and ninth graders take the PSAT 8-9. That's a precursor to the PSAT NMSQT. We offer the PSAT NMSQT to 10th and 11th graders. The 10th graders, true 10th graders, which means you're in your second year of high school, are paid for by the state. We also at RCPS paid for it for our 11th graders. The reason why we offer the PSAT NMSQT is because the NMSQT stands for the National Merit Scholarship, and we want to make sure that our students have that access to that test as well.
And that's why I wanted the differentiation because I know that we use the PSAT at the 10th, 11th grade level to pick merit scholars.
Exactly.
And just wanted to know what the difference was between that.
Right. No, that, thank you for asking that because that's the thing that we also need to point out that our district does. Many districts just offer it to 10th graders because it's paid for by the state, and then 11th graders have to pay for it if they'd like to take it. So I appreciate y'all being generous enough to pay for that for our students. And we also, Ms. Duncan, we use that as our AP potential when we send home letters to parents to see which AP classes students might do well in based on their PSAT scores. Thank you all so much.
If, ladies, before you leave as a point of privilege, if I can just underscore the tremendous value that our focus on this department has resulted in. I know that, went to Ms. Chester three years ago, three or four years ago, and talked about a real focus on AP and increasing participation, increasing AP exam achievement, increasing course offerings. And it's great over those years to see the results when you're sharing those results in terms of increased high-level performance on AP exams, increased AP exams being administered, all of these pieces, and then looking at our students who are viable for Governor's Honors and looking at the number of AP scholars named. I mean, it can easily be that we just don't take a moment to take in how truly amazing and remarkable this is when you look at it in light of history and precedent, right, in terms of what our students are achieving. So thank you for, because you're focused on this work every day, and we're seeing the benefit of that. And I also commend Chief Academic Officer Chester for being a powerful advocate for the work that you do and making sure that we have a departmentalized, consistent focus on this, and we're seeing the results. So thanks. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you all very much. I feel honored to work here.
Thank you, ladies. Next is Office of Student Support Services.
This afternoon, for the first portion of the presentation, I'm being joined by Mrs. Tara Geiser. She is a learning support coordinator. And we're also joined in the audience by our new learning support director, Dr. Barbara Howard.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. I'm going to begin. Tonight, I'm speaking about our speech and language statistics. Approximately, we have about 194 students with disabilities who have been identified primarily for speech, and then about 866 as secondary disability in the area of speech, which is approximately 1,060 students in our district that are receiving speech and language services of some kind. Currently, we have 20 SLPs, and 14 of those SLPs are contract providers. And approximately, their caseloads are about 55. We've been working on decreasing those so they can really. We've been working on decreasing those so they can really provide direct services to the best of their ability. In July, the action item that was discussed was presence learning. I believe you were very familiar with presence learning. And currently we have six full-time SLPs with them. Today, I'm speaking with you as a proposed action to increase the allocation by point eight. We have been working with several agencies, as you know, and currently, one of the agencies we're working with is, as many districts are, personnel shortage. And so this point eight allocation will allow us to decrease the caseloads even more so that the students can receive direct services. So my recommendation to the board tonight is that the superintendent will recommend the approval of the contract amendment that we already have with presence learning as a private provider for SLPs to provide speech services as outlined in their IEPs, totaling the amount of $641,130. And the rationale behind this is for the private provider for the SLPs, they'll be able to ensure that each student that is identified with the speech disability can receive their free and appropriate public education. And also, as I spoke earlier, this contract amendment would just increase that point eight of TE. That is all that I have to share. Is there any questions?
I have a quick question. You said that their caseload right now was 55. If we increase it by this point eight, what would their caseload be?
So it's approximately 55. So some of our high schools have significantly higher numbers and that is part of why we're trying to decrease their caseload. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time.
So for part two of the presentation tonight, thank you. I get the opportunity to provide some school food services updates. And in this particular area, I always like to kind of start with the end in mind, making, being very intentional to promote and to share that everything we do with all of our departments is always going to support the mission, vision, beliefs of who we are here in Rockdale. And so of course, for our school food services, we believe that it is our responsibility to fuel children with nutritious meals. And so essentially, this is what we're trying to accomplish. I think it is important to state that it is the expectation that we do this and remain financially independent, correct? And so that's going to be very important as I share some additional slides with you. And so just the opportunity to ask you, do you have school food services questions? And so of course, I'm going to share some things that I have anticipated, maybe great questions that you may have either as the board or as the public. And so before we start discussing the context of school food services, it's important to really start within the larger context of what's happening in the community. And so you're not just sitting watching me for the next 10 minutes. I'm going to engage you as the audience and so I will ask you a question. And so can all families receive access to food assistance benefits such as SNAP? What's your answer? You're absolutely correct. So all families cannot access these food assistance benefits. Those benefits are really based on household income and households that may necessarily require those resources. Now, it is important to say that just because a family or a household is not eligible for SNAP benefits, it does not mean that that family may not be impacted by food insecurity. When we're talking about food insecurity, we're talking about instances by which you may not necessarily have steady, consistent access to food. And so in many instances, what we tend to see in our communities, families may not have access to SNAP, but they may have to make tough decisions such as, am I going to pay Rockdale Water Resources or am I going to go shopping at Food Depot? And so in a number of instances, we've seen what tends to be more reliance on food pantries and outreach efforts to really address food insecurity in the community. So in addition to this, are school meals available to all of our students at no cost? You are a great class tonight, so absolutely correct. As much as we would love to say we can and we really believe that the past couple of years have provided great information for federal government to really make decisions about how feasible that particular concept might be, we cannot provide school meals to all kids at no cost. And so the caveat here, it becomes our responsibility that we can provide it based on whatever those rates are. There obviously are some students who will become eligible or will be deemed eligible for reduced price meals. And so can you share the tiered approach for meal reimbursement? So let me start by saying, and I sat through the school nutrition training and it's very, very complicated, but there is an expectation that the school nutrition would ensure that we follow meal patterns and that what we're doing is based on reimbursable meals. The bottom line is if we're serving students things that are not considered reimbursable meals, then they will not be eligible for those reimbursements. So that's critical to get started. And so at a very elementary level, because I'm really presenting this in a manner that I need, which I hope will benefit you. But when we're talking about the process of reimbursement, it's really either you're free, you're reduced, or you're paid. And what you're actually looking at would be those rates. And so here's something that's very important to say. So during the pandemic, based on what happened with the federal government, they made a very important decision and said, we're going to provide meals for all of our students at no cost. And so while they provide those meals for all students at no cost, what is very important to consider is they reimbursed schools for those meals at the free rate. And so when you're looking at that particular screen, you're going to see how significantly different that is. Now, that was terribly confusing for the public because the public made an assumption that because I'm eating at no cost and I'm being, the district is being reimbursed at a free rate, now I am eligible for free or reduced lunch. You're only eligible for free or reduced lunch by formally going through the process to be deemed eligible for free or reduced meals. And so here are some interesting RCPS statistics. Actually, we're excited to share that our free reduced meals eligibility is up to 68.92%. That is phenomenal. If you're looking at this data, last year it was very suppressed. It was around 40%. Of course, we know that we had significantly maybe additional people in the community who may have opted out of completing the free and reduced meal application because the motivation wasn't there. You were going to eat free meals anyway. And so we are excited that we are actually probably moving in a direction that represents really the truer picture of who we are in Rockdale. And I'll tell you in a few minutes why that's very important. The other thing that I would like to share with you is about the eligibility rollover change. So prior to having this opportunity presented to me by Dr. Oates, that had absolutely no meaning to me, right? So here's what happened with the rollover change. At the beginning of each school year, there is an allowability that if a student had been eligible for free or reduced meals during that prior year, even if that student does not have a current meal application, that student can still have that designation. This past, well, this current school year, we had even greater flexibility that we could go across multiple school years. And so what that meant was if you were eligible for free meals during 2020 and you'd not submitted another application since that particular point in time, during the very first day of this school year, for the first 30 days of that school year, you'd be eligible to eat at that free rate. Essentially, what happens is it's only good for 30 days. And so when you're looking at that count, you're looking at September 12, there were 1,805 students who were deemed either free or reduced meals during those first 30 days and those families did not submit the free or reduced meals application. So that becomes very important because now you're talking about a significant portion of the population who may be subjected to food charges, who probably will be eligible for free or reduced meals. And so the team has been very diligent in trying to work to get those numbers down. And as you can see currently, we're at 957 students who are still a part of that population and still continuing to work in that particular area. And so if you're asking, what is the big deal about the free and reduced meal application? How can I access this information? It is available there. We encourage families, if possible, to submit the online version of the application because the approval process is really more instant. If you don't want to do the online version, you can access a paper copy. It is available in both English and in Spanish. And in many instances, because we call it the free and reduced meal application, people tend to think that's the only value. The graphic on my right could be on your left, really shows all of the other things that you can do. So for example, when you heard earlier about the opportunity to take that AP course and maybe having to pay for that course, there is a great benefit for being eligible for free and reduced meals that could also transfer to other opportunities to benefit those students. And so what is direct certification? So currently, right now, in Rockdale County, we have over 5,000 students that we would consider directly certified students. The directly certified students, it includes a combination of students. So for example, we've already spoken about students who may be eligible for SNAP. If you are eligible for SNAP in the community, because remember, what happens in that school building is a microcosm of what's happening in the community, then those families are not required to complete a free and reduced meal application. They're automatically going to be eligible for free and reduced meals. The other part of it comes back to certain populations such as students who may be in foster care, experiencing homelessness, migrant students. And we've already discussed SNAP. And so all of those students will directly certify. And so that becomes very important as we also discuss another concept in a few minutes. And so you've heard me reference the reimbursements and I'm sure you're asking, how do we track that? Well, each quarter, when Keith provides that statement, you're going to see a line item on that statement and it's going to show you reimbursement for breakfast, reimbursement for lunch, reimbursement for snacks. And I think probably the fact that was interesting to me as I studied this and worked with the school nutrition staff is a lot of people only consider the reimbursement for students who are eligible for free or reduced meals, but there's actually a paid reimbursement. So there's a reimbursement value for every student. Now, of course, if that reimbursement value is only 77 cents or only 50 cents, you're not going to get very far. But there is a reimbursement value for all students if you are accessing a reimbursable meal. And so now you're asking meal prices. Who sets the meal prices? Well, I'm looking at the people who govern the approval for the meal prices each year. So each year, you will have the opportunity to approve per the recommendation of the school superintendent of what those meal prices will be. And we're very proud to say here in Rockdale, we've done very little changes with the meal prices. And so it is not that the program hasn't been impacted by, the supply chain as other places have, but we've really done a lot to consider the needs of our public and to try to keep our prices at a very moderate rate. And so if you're asking questions such as, how can families really manage the meal accounts? There is the MySchool Bucks. You can install that on your phone. You can even set alerts that will tell you, for example, that account is below $10 or that account is below $5. So there are very innovative ways that you can manage that information. If you're still writing checks, and every now and then I may do that, you can certainly write a check and send that check to your child's school. And so now for the next question, can students charge meals? There is a small allowance that students can charge meals. Currently, the value is up to $10. That doesn't necessarily, if you're thinking about the math and looking at those meal prices, you know that $10 won't necessarily go across the entire week. I think what's important to know is how closely the school nutrition manager works with the building level principal. So it is not a gotcha model. We really try to make sure that the parent is aware that the account has a low balance and try to use some family engagement strategies to engage the families to really get some additional information and ultimately get money paid on the account. And so what happens if the meal charges exceed $10? Ultimately, what primarily would happen is the child would be eligible for alternate meals. And so alternate meals can take a variety of forms. The reason why I say may is because in a number of instances, just logistically based on how we're set up as a district, how we're organized in that cafeteria, it's really not possible in some instances to make sure that I know before Akita comes through those doors that Akita should have an alternate meal. Our non-negotiable is we never do anything to ostracize children, to embarrass children. That's a very confidential moment and we never take food away from students. So that's our non-negotiable. So if it works out in that particular instance, there are times when they're able to work with the classroom teacher to kind of work through kind of some of the logistics of how to navigate that. But more important, more importantly, we're student support services. So we don't want to be so focused on if you should get an alternate meal and miss the opportunity of, are there other resources that you should be able to access in the community? Lobbying and working with our family liaisons and working with our social workers. So there are other opportunities that we take to look at how can we best serve the student. And so what is the participation rate for school meals? Here, you'll see kind of a comparison from 2020 as compared to the 2023 school year. You'd like to think that our students, we have a captive audience, so they have to eat with us. That's not automatically the case. Historically, we've noticed that we have a much consistently higher participation for lunch than would be for breakfast and that's for a number of reasons. If I'm driving my child into school, I may be much more likely to stop off at a favorite eatery before I get there. And so there could be a number of reasons why they participate far less for breakfast than for lunch. I'll talk about this a little bit later, but it's also another chance for us to engage our students just like a good business would. Ask them their thoughts, ask them what it would take to get you to eat with us more often. So that's also something else that we're talking about. And so when will RCPS apply for community eligibility provision, right? So we're hearing that there are schools in districts next to us and all kids in those schools or maybe all kids across those districts may eat meals at absolutely no cost. So let's talk about this for a moment. So let's pretend that we were all attending Blaine Elementary School. And in this particular instance, it's important to state that community eligibility provision is based, based, is based primarily on your direct certification. So that's why it was important for us to discuss that earlier during this presentation. Essentially, what they're going to do is they're going to look at the total number of students who directly certified, divided by your enrollment. When they look at that particular account, they're going to multiply that by a multiplier and ultimately that will tell you where you land. So in this particular instance, 80% of the students in Blaine Elementary School would be eligible for free meals, meaning they will be eligible at a reimbursement rate that's free. So at the other kids, the 20% would be eligible at what rate? The paid rate. So it's very important to say as we're thinking through this, the state will not even allow us to consider community eligibility provision unless you have a certain percent of your population that directly certifies. In the past, we haven't had that percent. So now we're looking at over 5,000. It wasn't uncommon in the past to have over 2,000 and so it wasn't feasible. The other part that you have to think about is while all those kids may eat at no cost, you can't run a business and lose the profit on what you're buying. So if you are community eligibility provision and only 60% of the students in that building are being reimbursed at a free rate, that means you're going to have a difficult time maintaining the focus that we have to remain financially independent. And so currently, kind of with this consideration, the school nutrition department has been considering what is the viability of Rockdale County Public Schools implementing this model? They're looking individually at schools. Overall, as a school district, it may not necessarily make money sense, but there are individual schools that may have a threshold that would be able to accommodate that. The other thing to consider is if they're only reimbursing you at the free rate for a certain percent, then you have to make smart choices about how can we use supplemental sales and other opportunities to make sure that we can leverage. There are times when school districts take on that model and they go under very quickly because they don't necessarily realize that that free rate is based on a certain number of percent. And if you're based on the, the, excuse me, if you're based on the paid rate for a much smaller percent, it's definitely going to impact you as time goes on. So the bottom line is what are our next steps? So one next step for us is to continue to leverage student support services. So one next step for us is to continue to leverage student support services. I can't say this enough. It is probably one of our most important student support services. How many of us have ever been hungry? So teaching and learning is very important, but it always starts with a kid who has been fueled with a nutritious meal, right? And we're going to continue to monitor those 30-day numbers. So we're having conversations about how can we continue to get that countdown? I think it is important to note that sometimes families don't want to apply for free and reduced meals because of the stigma. And so we try to do everything we can to ensure that that information remains confidential. I've heard a phenomenal educator before say, "Free is how I eat. It's not how I learn." And frankly, free is really not how our kids eat. Even when our families can access those meals at no cost, someone else has to pay the price. And so as you've already heard me say this, we're going to continue to research the community eligibility provision to see, is this a viable option for Rockdale County Public Schools? And I really think it is important to say, while the school nutrition department could not be with me tonight, they gain absolutely nothing when a child has to eat an alternate meal. It is also important to say that even when we serve an alternate meal, it's not the hot meal, but there's still a labor cost, and we still had to buy things to purchase those meals. And in some instances, we actually have school nutrition staff who go into their pockets to help our students eat and to help ensure that all students can access those hot meals. The bottom line is how can we engage our students as stakeholders? Because they really are our customers. But ultimately, how can we make all of these smart decisions, all of these smart choices, and remain financially independent? Because the one action item we don't want to have is when we have to come back here and say, how can you bail us out as a department? Because we're not financially independent. So we are at this moment, and we really want to make sure that we stay in this particular area. Are there any questions?
I have a question. What is your ultimate meal? What is the ultimate meal?
Okay, so the ultimate meal for lunch is a cheese sandwich, and it's not heated, not grilled, or there's a salad. And for breakfast, it could be a cereal bar or cereal.
I have a question.
Okay.
Thank you so much for this information. It's very valuable. I've had community partners and organizations ask, how can they provide money on account for students who have the $10 that they owe money? Is there a way that someone in the community can help with that and help offset those costs for the students' accounts?
Absolutely. So one way is one particular school has actually done its own outreach. And so we had an individual who went directly into a school because he knew he wanted to give back to that particular school. But I'm going to defer to my partner Cindy Ball to share the other strategy.
So we did put, we put a project on rcpspartner.com, which is our local crowdfunding, you know, page where we put opportunities for the business community and individuals, really anybody who would like to contribute. It's very easy to contribute on that site. It is sponsored by Georgia United Credit Union. They pay all the fees for that site. So 100% of a donation goes to what you want it to go to, because all those fees are paid through that sponsorship. So it's very easy to donate. And if somebody wanted to specify a school or, I mean, even if they want to specify where they want their money to go, they can put that in the notes of that donation.
That's true. The direct, I'm sorry, your, the CEP program is based on, I'm sorry, direct certification program. I'm trying to get the right words, right?
You're right.
It's heavily reliant on that.
Yes.
Tell me the formula again, please.
So let's go back and do it together. So based on this, it comes down to for us like that over 5,000 count. So you would take that over 5,000 count, and you would divide that 5,000 count based on the enrollment, and then ultimately, you're going to multiply that by the multiplier, which is the 1.6. And then that's going to tell you how, what percent of your population will actually be eligible for free meals, because that's what it does. Now, the ideal is to have a direct certification that's so high that you end up really with majority, if not all of your students, eligible for reimbursement at the free rate.
And so the multiplier is a set figure?
Say it again.
It's a set number? The multiplier is a set number?
Yes, it's a set number, yes. So the real sticky wicket is what your direct cert account, what your direct certification number is. So in the past, when Peggy and I would have this conversation, it really wasn't an issue because we didn't have enough students who directly certified. And I think it is important to say that in some instances, you have students who automatically kind of populate and they directly certify. And you may have other students for unique reasons, such as I may not have your state identify, and you don't automatically directly certify. And so there are strategies where you can make students categorically eligible. So for example, you can look at the transportation pattern. You can study to see that we're all coming from the same Duncan household. And so if the Duncan household is impacted by these features, that can help you to look further at what's happening with Heather, that maybe Heather didn't populate in that particular area and to help figure out if additional students should be counted in that 5,000.
Okay, and so we're looking at the CEP model, and if we get to the point where this is the model that we adopt, right? This is forecasting for you, and we get to that point and we're able to do that, can we switch back if it's not working out?
So the bottom line is the state will not even let you consider it unless you have a certain threshold. Based on my understanding, and we can certainly bring additional information and staff back, it has to be, it has to be based on a four-year model. So you're not talking, you don't want to do something that you're really flim-flamming going back and forth from day to day. So you really want to know enough about your population. To be really honest, if you think that the numbers you have are an anomaly, it may not necessarily be the best choice for you. The other thing that you'd have to consider is also that you're going to continue to have a growing enrollment. So it's a really great program. It has great benefits for the public, but you have to remain financially independent. So first, you care about kids, but you have to put on that tough hat, and you have to answer those tough questions. And we have seen districts go under because they're trying to do that model, but it just didn't work out. So you don't want to make a decision that's going to be year to year. You'd want to do something that you feel like would be sustainable for at least the four-year cycle. And that's why it's more of an advantage to look at schools that have a pattern that you know would be able to sustain that.
And it also, I mean, not to be this way, but you want families to find their way out of poverty. But this model actually, you have to be, it's a high poverty rate model. It really is. So it's, anyway, off my soapbox, but that's what it is. We're trying to uplift families, but this will work if we have a high poverty rate in the community.
Yeah, and the bottom line is this is public school. So we don't pick our families and we don't pick the kids. And just a constant reminder that the things that impact our community also impact us inside of this school building.
Of course. Well, thank you for that. You seem well researched. Appreciate it.
We're learning together.
So I have a question for you. Back on slide number nine, where you talked about how many direct certified kids we have now, the 5,652 in our system.
That one?
Yes. Which I know that is what is based on the CEP model. Is the 5,652 significantly higher than where it was? What percentage? And what do you think has caused that to go up? Has the SNAP benefits changed, the qualifications for that? Or are we seeing a lot more homeless population than we did? Or is Rockdale County a section for migrants that have been relocated from somewhere else? Or what do you see in that's causing that? Because 5,600 or 16,000, that's not very, you know, that's.
Awesome. So Chairwoman Norfair, you're doing a great job of asking the question and answering it. But I will say a lot of things that you just said, they really are the answers. Number one, and I don't have the number in the front of me, but the prior count I saw was over 2,000. So one, you have to have a strong child find system, right? I can't speak for the SNAP process, but I will say you have to have a strong child find system. You heard from April Fallon earlier this school year, and you saw during that particular presentation that we were less than half the way through the school year, and we were already over 600 for students experiencing homelessness. So those students are going to be included in that particular account. And then also, you also heard the student registration presentation. And so from that, you also know there are all these different types of guardianships, and there are growing number of students who are not necessarily in stable situations with their permanent guardians and may be in foster care. And so I think there are a number of variables that are impacting that number.
But it just looks like we're nowhere close to being able to do the CEP right now. In my opinion, I'm asking.
So I would, countywide, and I'm not the expert, and I don't play it on TV. Countywide, I would say probably not. There are some strong prospects for individual schools. And so that's what Mr. Allen has been doing. He's been working with the mentor who is really a guru in this particular area to say, let's look at a few schools in this district that would be viable candidates. And that's what you really want to do. I don't like using the P word, the pilot word, but you really want to look at strong candidates to give you a start.
Sounds like part of the process is we've got to do a better job administratively, getting these kids registered to go from 70-something percent free and reduced lunch down to 58. We've dropped the ball somewhere. That's my statement.
Okay.
So what is the benefit of being on the CEP versus being where we're at? If parents are not eligible to have their children on free and reduced, what would be the benefit of moving to this model for individual schools if those who are eligible are already getting free and reduced?
Yep. So I may, so let me clarify. The benefit of this model would be when you are CEP approved. So if we were at Blaine Elementary, then every student in that student, in that school would eat at no cost. And we would be reimbursed at the free rate per whatever that percent is. So what that could look like is if my child is enrolled in Blaine, maybe I'm not within that poverty range. Maybe I'm making $460,000. But by virtue of the fact that that entire school is approved for CEP, my child would still have the benefit of eating at no cost. And so the real benefit is we don't have to have these conversations about cheese sandwich. And we don't have to have these kind of difficult conversations with families who are choosing between Rockdale Water Resources or Food Depot. Because if I'm making a difficult decision at home to use a food pantry, I'm probably going to make a difficult decision that I'm not going to prioritize paying for a meal that I need to pay for rather than paying my bill.
I have one last question, because I know the homeless in the school system is different homeless outside. So I guess my question, how do we inform the parents that they may be considered MVA? Where they can know they would be eligible for the free and reduced lunch? And the reason I say, because you know, you have people that say, well, they know they have a good salary, but it's a bunch, you got five families in one house. And by the rule, they are home. So how do we educate them that you can qualify for this?
Okay, so multiple things, and we're merging presentations, but I'm going to roll with you. So even when families are sharing housing, the sticky wicket for McKinney-Bento is you have to clarify that you're sharing housing for economic hardship, because I lost my job, because I can't afford to live by myself. So I could have two of my best chiefs over here, and I could say, Cindy and Shirley, let's share housing. Because our three families are sharing housing in a 40,000 square feet house, that does not necessarily mean that we're doubling up or that we would be eligible. But if I'm experiencing loss of income, hardship, those particular instances. So the number one way that we catch those families primarily has been during the student registration and enrollment process. A lot of times during that process, through asking questions, we partner very closely with Kathia Brown. And if there are any red flags, such as everyone completing that application, you must tell us your living condition. We changed how we collected that information. We used to ask the question, are you homeless? And you can guess what many of our families said. They said no. And so now we say we will remove the stigma. We're just going to ask you your living condition. Do you own? Do you rent? Are you leasing? Are you in a shelter? So we ask everyone the exact same question. And so automatically, based on how they answer those questions, it's going to be a red flag, and it's going to send a notification to the McKinney-Bento coordinator that she's going to know we need to do an outreach in that particular area. Now, in addition to that, because homelessness is not a fixed point in time, we could have circumstances by which in that local school building, we have social workers, we have counselors. Because a lot of times, once our students and kids are enrolled in that school building, the leadership team in that building are going to know that situation best. They're going to understand the patterns of what's happening. We also see that correlation when students are experiencing lots of tardiness, absent from school. So sometimes there are red flags that cause us to ask questions. And then as we probe into that particular situation. So always when the child becomes eligible for McKinney-Bento, we talk about the protection. We talk about their rights. We talk about why that child is able to stay in the school that you need to stay in. We make those decisions with the parent, and we also talk about the benefits.
Dr. Smith Dixon, I certainly want to thank you and the school nutrition department for the amazing work that you're doing. I can say throughout this pandemic and certainly in the aftermath, thankfully, as it seems to be receding in terms of the data we're tracking in terms of our in-district data and also our county data, I can say unequivocally that in the previous administration of school food nutrition and in the current one, I've not seen any balls dropped. What I've seen is a lot of hard work and commitment and dedication on the part of the school nutrition personnel, as well as from the top in terms of working very closely with our families and trying to make sure that we can get through what has been an unprecedented, difficult time, where we saw the numbers plummet in terms of eligibility for a lot of understandable reasons as we're dealing with a once-in-a-century pandemic. And so it's great to see that those numbers are coming back up, the eligibility to overall numbers. So I want to commend you. And I asked Dr. Smith Dixon to do this presentation because I think well-meaning people may be misinformed. There have been information put out in social media that talks about what students are getting, not getting. But thanks, I wanted you to clarify. And I'm not just speaking to the persons here in person, but also to those who are tuning in, live streaming. We're making the decisions that are best for our students, but we have to operate within the rules that the state puts forward. And notwithstanding some of the constraints that those rules may impose, we're erring on the side of supporting students. So thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. I think as we get ready for Mr. Buonce to take the podium.
Good evening, Madam Chair North, Vice Chair Brown. We're going to warm it up for you in here, Ms. Brown, in just a few minutes. We're going home to watch the ballgame if we ever get out of here tonight, okay? What did he like to be with you tonight? Thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to start off with a couple of action items since we have some needs that we need your approval on. The first is our Rockdale County Water Department Resources. Superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the Rockdale County Department of Water Resources utilities and request for the Georgia Highway Eight Inch Gravity Sewer Main Extension through our property. This property is the High Tower Trail Elementary School located on Highway 138. The easement document is contingent upon the approval of our superintendent and general counsel. This is to provide access for construction and maintenance of the Rockdale Water Authority's Eight Inch Gravity Line that they are updating in that part, which we tap into with our High Tower Elementary School. The second one is, this is the Tyler Technology Transportation Services. I talked to you several months ago about we were going this direction, and we're at that point in time, or we need to get things rolling so we'll have some of these items ready for next school year. So the superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve Tyler Technology Service First Transit to provide for unit GPS tracking, the MyStop Parent Notification Application for Transportation Services, the Route Navigation Assistance System, and update the applications currently in service for $251,407.67. Tyler Technology is our provider for our. Tyler Technology is our provider for R C P S routing, school zoning, planning, bus inventory, and the transportation employee database is the preferred provider for the additional services. This agreement updates the current systems, provides the hardware and software for the units for live GPS and applied services. The rationale is that this brings back into service of live and historical GPS. I shared briefly, the last time I talked, spoke about this was when we have an incident, we're going back to review, we can, with this system, we can get on the route and we can track down and see exactly the speed of that bus all the way to where it stops. Now, we don't have ten and twenty second gaps as we currently do with the system we went to four years ago. It also provides the My Stop, which is that, the preferred application our parents like for notification services. And this also provides the link between our programs and the global positioning system. Again, this is two hundred and fifty one thousand, four hundred and seven dollars and sixty seven cents from East Blosst five. Let's move on with some exciting things that happened. I spoke to you last month and just gave you a, a laundry list of things we did during the break. But here's some pictures to back that up. Memorial Middle School with the gym screening and tile installation. And I have the last sheet of this tells you how many rooms they did at Memorial. Here's our high school, middle schools. This is Rockdale County High School to your right, Salem High School to your left. They did an awesome job getting those gyms done. This is part of our C M R one and two that we approved over a year ago. They are finally got the generator installed at Memorial Middle School. Of Salem High School over the break, they put in this rooftop unit. As you can see, these are large units. We brought in cranes and it was a full week's worth of work, but they got those installed. The curb setting and all that was ready to roll. And then we did some mulch around our playgrounds. That's important for school safeties, I mean, for our student safety. We have an inspector that does these every year for us, checks them out and then we come by and fill those out. Believe this is the list. You already have been spoken to about this. It's just there for your convenience and you refer back to it. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you, Phil. Next is Office of Technology. Derek.
Chairwoman North and Vice Chair Brown, Dr. Oates, board members, good evening. Tonight, we'd like to share a few updates about the secondary Promethean panels and the Epic system and then talk about Microsoft licenses and then an action item. So starting November first, the installation of the Promethean panel started. At the secondary schools, there's two pictures here on the right from Conners Middle Schools and the panels being installed there. They are installed overnight, so there, the classroom is not interrupted during the daytime. These installations will be completed by the end of December. So all secondary schools will be finished by the end of December. For the Epic system, all schools, secondary schools have been installed. For the Epic system, you'll see there a few pictures. There's the Epic box. It's a control box in the classroom above every door in the classroom. The bottom left, that's the actual panel that sits in the front office. You'll see up in the top right, that's a D L S modeling. You can't really see it, but it's modeling, wearing the, the lanyard microphone there. And so we're excited to have those. Some good news as well. The elementary schools have started. So they've started on two elementary schools and plan to have everything finished by the beginning of school next year. For our Microsoft licensing, part of that licensing is the Microsoft operating, operation systems, our operating systems. And so the operating systems go from the Windows servers, all the Windows servers that we have in our data center. It also includes Windows eleven for all our laptops and our desktops. So that's over twenty thousand or approximately twenty thousand devices there. It also includes the Office three sixty five apps. So we have Outlook. It's our email platform. It has over a hundred gigs of space for all our users. We also have, all the apps have collaboration and sharing across all the platforms there. It comes with Word, PowerPoint, Excel. And it also includes OneNote, which is a digital notebook for all our users. And some people don't know this, but all users, so students and employees can install Office Desktop on up to five personal devices. So they're, if it's a PC or a Mac, they're able to do that. They're also able to install Office Apps on any tablet, up to five tablets or up to five phones. They can do that. Additionally, OneDrive is a part of the platform. And so OneDrive is our cloud storage platform that we use. We have over five ter, well, each user has over five terabyte, terabytes of space that they can store. So all files and folders are all stored there. SharePoint is for community sites or team sites and we use that internally. Teams, Microsoft Teams, we use that for video conferencing. Sway is a, it's a one page webpage for students, for digital storing, story, storytelling. And then we have Microsoft Forms, so teachers can create forms, but they can also create assessments to deliver to students as well through Microsoft Forms. We have Microsoft Stream, which is our video platform where teachers can create, manage and deliver videos to students. Additionally, we have our email advanced threat. And so we have anti phishing, anti spam and anti malware. So it protects those three things. Some people don't know, we have over about, over two hundred thousand to three hundred thousand emails we receive in each day. About half of those actually enter our mailboxes because they're blocked because of spam or because of phishing or malware. It also protects our attachments. So when you receive an attachment, it checks every attachments before it's delivered to a mailbox to make sure that that doesn't have anything malicious in that attachment. It also checks anything in SharePoint, OneDrive and Teams as well. And then lastly, when an email is sent with a link in it as well, it verifies that that link is not malicious before the user clicks on it. It includes identity and access management. So all our user accounts are housed in Azure Active Directory. Along with that, we have, we've turned on multi factor authentication or M F A. Sometimes you might have heard of it from two factor authentication. So that means that you have two forms of authentication, your password and it sends a text message with a code on it as well for the second form of authentication. We also have conditional access. It means access based on certain conditions. So who you are is a condition of what rights you have to access certain platforms. Also, how you access it. So if you try to access a legacy through a legacy authentication, it'll block users from doing that because most times malicious users are trying to do that. And then it'll also block where you're trying to access from. So for example, if you try to log in outside of the United States, you're not able to log into any of our systems if you're outside the U S. We manage all our devices through Microsoft Intune. So we're able to manage them when they're on school premises or when they're at home as well. And what's great about this is that when a user login, logs in, we're able to specifically target them with the, with the correct apps. So if it's an elementary school student, we're able to send out elementary apps to that student. Or if it's a high school student, they get high school apps. And the same thing for if they're an employee, they get all the employee applications as well. They also get the profiles that come down. So an elementary student might not have access to all the things that an employee would have access to. And then lastly, we have Microsoft Defender, which protects all our devices, which includes a firewall and virus protection for all our devices. And so tonight I have an action item that we would like to bring to the board. The superintendent will recommend that the Rockdale County Board of Education approve the purchase of Microsoft Volume License from Crayon Software Experts LLC. The license agreement will be for three years with the first year at three hundred and thirty seven thousand, five hundred and twenty seven dollars and eighty seven cents. The second year will be three hundred and fifty eight thousand, five hundred and twenty one dollars and sixty five cents. And the third year will be four hundred and thirty nine thousand, fifty dollars and three cents. The financial impact will be, will be as planned from the general fund. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Office of Financial Services, Mr. Keith Hall.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair North, Madam Vice Chair Brown, Dr. Oates, members of the board. I'll be going over the preliminary financial statements for the month of October. All right. Revenue for the month of October is twelve point nine million. Revenue year to date is thirty nine point five million, which is twenty one point eight percent of our budget. Last year, we received eleven point nine million in October, thirty nine point one million year to date, which is twenty two point eight percent of our budget. Expenditures for the month of October were fifteen point three million, sixty point five million year to date, which is thirty two point seven percent of our budget. Last year in October, we received fourteen point four, we expended fourteen point four million, fifty five point seven million year to date, which is thirty two point five percent of our budget. Our outstanding incomers is our two million, four hundred and forty three thousand, two hundred and fifty seven dollars. Our fund balance at the end of October is seventeen point seven million approximately. And last year at this time, we were at twelve point three million. Our assets, excuse me, approximately twenty two million, our liabilities, four point three million. Those are our third party payments that will be cleared up by the next meeting. And our fund balance is seventeen point seven million. That is it. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Oates.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman and to our board members. I just want to share that, of course, previously I shared that the board was recognized by G S P A as being an exemplary board for the seventh time. So let's please join me to the public in applauding our board on that accomplishment. And I'm very, very happy to report that per the notice that was provided by Lee at G S P A, I was notified this week that our board has also again been named the recipient of the Leading Edge Award for Innovation. In this case, it pertains to our Leadership Development Program and the Tier One Educational Leadership Certification that our cohort participants who complete Real Academy will receive. So let's applaud that. That's very exciting news. And that, I think, Cindy, is this the third or fourth recognition for Leading Edge?
Yes, right. It's either the third or fourth, exactly. But previous, yes, previous recognition has been our early learning, our RCA, early learning. Is, so this is four, this is four, yeah. I was, it was four. So this is, this is great. And let me just say that not every district is, board is recognized as an exemplary board and not every board is recognized as a Leading Edge Award. You, they, they have criteria, serious criteria, and I commend our board and, and our whole team. Because obviously this is a team effort to, that results in the innovation that makes us viable. As a board that makes the board viable for that recognition. I'd also like to, to point out that I had the privilege yesterday and also Vice Chairwoman Brown, on behalf of the board, was able to meet me there at Salem High School to congratulate our varsity football team who will be traveling to Savannah on Saturday for one o'clock first round, class three, a playoff game against Calvary Day. And so we're very excited about that. Now, they're number one rated. And we're number four, but we're going to go and we're going to put it, leave everything out there. And it was great to talk to the, the fellas and Vice Chairman Brown encouraged them as well. And, and it's been just so amazing to see the outpouring of love and support in the community. People coming out of the woodworks to volunteer for snacks and, and Gatorade, palm, you know, everything. You know, helping with transport, making sure that they're transported safely and comfortably that distance. And the good news is, is that it looks by all account, Phil, that we'll be beyond the inclement weather that, you know, we wouldn't encourage them to go now, right? But, but when they do go, it's going to be looking pretty good down there in my neck of the woods, Savannah, Sober and Trudland, that whole area down there, Effingham. And so we're very, very pleased and we, I want us all to just join together and just be so excited and support them. And I do know that that's happening and we're very excited. Yes. Also, we, we have one of our representatives, one of our local, our delegation members here, Representative Doreen Carter, who I believe is also in that donation group, are you not, Representative Carter? Thank you so much for that. Thank you. We appreciate that. And there are so many others. So I thank you. Let, let me say this. I'd be remiss if I didn't say, in his absence, we want to remember Jim McBride, he's, his birthday is today and he's, I'm sure he's celebrating. He must be celebrating if he's not here. So we want to wish him happy birthday in his absence. But Jim has been a great leader in the past of the board and continues to be a great leader and inspiration. I'm grateful personally at the point of personal privilege for his support. And let me also say this. Lastly, let me, let me bring it back to say that there have been a number of questions that have been posed as there is a lot of economic development and growth discussions that are going on writ large in Rockdale County. And there have been a lot of questions that have been posed, the same question actually, but on many occasions has been posed to the, to me and to the district in terms of our school's capacity. Phil, I'm going to ask you as a point of privilege to retake the podium. You're always ready and prepared. That's what I love about you. One of the many things I love about you. And so, so what I want to share here is this. There has been, it has been said that we, the school, one reason to maybe not favor a particular development or growth is that the school district is not equipped to facilitate growth in students. I'm going to give you a couple of minutes to address that because clearly it's more nuanced than that. And I would argue, just to make it simple, that we are equipped to deal with growth because we, we have to be, right? Because constitutionally and statutorily, we have to make sure that we educate all students that reside within our zone. We're between the ages of six and sixteen or until they complete their education, not sooner than turning sixteen years old. And, and we have processes in place such as a facilities plan and other things. But if you'll take a couple of minutes to address that.
Thank you, Dr. Oates. And Dr. Oates just mentioned, our business is teaching and learning for students, right? And so as they come to us, we accept them and we are going to make sure they have that opportunity in a great environment to learn and a place to, to find a home in Rockdale County Public Schools. So when they, when they call, the county calls, city calls or a contractor calls or residents, residents call, there's three pieces of data that I provide them regularly. One is the current enrollment at that school. The second is the projections that we have for this current year. And then I provide a, the maximum enrollment for that school as it is on that particular day. So we have, I use our instructional units that the state counts in every one of our buildings. But we may have taken one and made a science lab out of it or made a teaching and learning. We went over to C J Hicks and we need those programs for our students. And so we've adjusted the use of that room. And although it, so it reduces our number of, of maximum capacity in that, in that, that's the number I share with, with our, with our folks. So when the question comes of what are you going to do when, when a lot of students show up? Well, there's several things we can do. Number one is we may have to look at our classroom sizes as far as the number of students that are in there. As you all know, especially with COVID coming in, we've, we've, with the teacher options that we've had, we've, we've reduced some classes and brought some trailers into some schools to accommodate that. And then we also have the opportunity to, if we really get pushed, we'll bring in mobile classrooms. We've done that for years. We try to get away from that. Our percentage of those type of classrooms used in the district right now is very small. And, and so when I report out to what we have capacity in schools, I also mention the number of mobile classrooms that are currently being used. Now, we leave them parked wherever they are until we need them. And so if you go by a school and see like Memorial's got, I think we have eight of them out there right now. We're not using one of those for classroom instructions, but we leave them parked there because of the cost of moving them. And we may need them at Memorial at some point in time. And then of course, if we really get pushed down the road, we have some brand new schools that are huge in square footage. And one is Pine Street and one is J H House. J H House has zero new developments going into that zone right now. Flat Shoals has got a ton going in there as far as projections going. So we always have that opportunity of taking them to the line and moving it around a little bit, which is the last thing we want to do and it's never one thing we take lightly. And there's a lot of data that we look at and before we would ever go there. But before that, every, we ever get there, we have a lot of options to put a lot of kids back into our school buildings and teach them well and get them where they need to go with their education.
And Phil, I, I do appreciate that. I know you mentioned Flat Show, the elementary school where by contrast, say to the J H House.
Yes.
So it's very active, but one of the things is by virtue of some decisions we made, not for facilities purposes principally, but for quality of instruction purposes, we made the decision to relocate our gifted students back to the school. Although there, there were no substantive changes in the curriculum that they're receiving and the service delivery model and the content. But we have the ability now to leverage what was the program challenge facility for growth at Flat Shows, for example. So I just. So I just.
Eight, eight, 720-square-foot classrooms in all that site that we're ready to occupy. And Dr. Oates and I have already talked, as we look ahead and keep our eye around the next curve that's coming towards us. If, when that need comes to place, we have a place for RVC Elementary students to go to, I mean, teachers to go to, and we can turn that thing into classrooms with a flick of a finger, we're ready to go. And then we do have some mobile units still on that property that we've used for classrooms also and for our virtual learning. So we're well-equipped to move forward. That is one of our older schools. As we look at East Bloss Six and down the road, some of our changes and improvements we want to make, that's one we want to look at also. And Mr. Stewart and I have looked at several plans and options that we could use at Flat Shoals on that campus when we get to it. But for the immediate pressing needs, as we have these units coming out of the ground and sales continue to stay good and we have students move in, we will have the place for our students and a desk for them to learn and learn well. Yeah, a question we could ask, what's your formula? There is no magic formula. You know, I mean, you could have one house and, you know, if Dixon's moved in with the boot sinks, well, we would have, I don't know how many kids they have in their household, but we, Joy would have zero. So that number would flex. We might buy a five-bedroom house just because we want a big house, if we can afford it, and have zero kids. So there's no magic formula. Mr. Jim Steele, bless his memory, but he told me when he was working with Gwinnett, he says, within a small community, real small community, you might find a formula that works after the first few get in place. But I know as we had some developments right here next to CJ Hicks, we anticipate, this is pre-COVID, we expected to really get hit hard in, from that little community. And we got just a handful of kids. So you never know who's going to move in. We're ready for them. That's the bottom line and they'll get the teachers ready for them and we'll be ready to roll.
No, I appreciate that. Any questions for Phil on that? I just wanted that to be said because we're not only speaking to those who are here in person, but those who are tuning in. It would not be accurate to suggest or assert that we're not equipped to deal with growth because we have to be equipped to deal with growth. And that's the reality. And we don't take a position on economic development and growth in the sense of wading into that political discussion because our obligation as a school district is to be able to accommodate the students who lawfully reside within Rockdale County. And we place them where, consistent with where they're living and where they're zoned to attend, with all the exceptions that are in place for students to go to other schools for specialty purposes or program area services purposes. So I just wanted to share that. So if information is being shared that's different than what we've just shared with the public and it's not coming from school officials, then I would encourage persons to contact the school district so that we can give you accurate information. But thank you, Mr. Buonsef. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chairwoman.
Next on the agenda is the information section. There are five items listed on the agenda for you guys to review this week prior to our meeting next week. We'll move on to the recesses. Is there a need for a recess? No, okay. Just remind you guys to review the pending minutes. We'll be voting on those next week for the month of October. They're in assembly. There is no old business. We have had some action items presented, five items. Is there a need for a consent agenda for next week? Do I hear a motion for that? I have a motion in second to vote on these items of the consent agenda next week. All in favor, raise your hands, please. Motion carries unanimously. There is no board discussion. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I have a motion in second. All in favor, raise your hands, please. Motion carries unanimously. We're.